I'd like to call review of the time board official work session for Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Review of work session discussion meeting minutes. Department head report, a department head report. Treasure?
Um, wanted to let the commissioners know that we're experiencing an increased amount of taxpayers or people coming into our office that don't speak English. It's becoming difficult because there's, I mean, I can model my way through a little bit of Spanish because I went to school, but yesterday we had somebody from Portugal and somebody last week with Mandarin and I know that there is a phone that we can call that the courts use, um, but I'm just letting you know that there's an increase in the number of people who have been coming in and it's just difficult to communicate back and forth.
So I actually just read an article yesterday, well, that, but Apple just released a new set of headphones, the AirPod Pro threes are, uh, they translate.
Through the phone.
Yeah, so you hear what they're saying.
Yeah.
And if you want to speak back to them, so I don't know if that's something.
Is that something you have to subscribe to? I mean, it's.
No, it's.
You download an app on your phone and a lot of those people will have like an app on their phone. I've, I've had people come into my office where they will type into their app and then they'll show it to you.
Right.
I, I would think the headphones, they're just Bluetooth capable, so you could probably connect to any, any iPhone that has, has Bluetooth, so maybe give Kevin Tastic to see.
Yeah.
Something to keep in, in the.
Well, if I'm experiencing it, then others are experiencing it.
Yeah, especially the office have public.
Yeah.
Public, uh, access.
Well, I was in Japan, we use a Google Translate thing.
Any other department?
Josh? Just to give a, a finishing update on the appeals, uh, we had nine hundred and twenty-two appeals, uh, it's a hundred and seventy-nineish status and seven forty-three in values, uh, so it's basically normal. I mean, we had five thousand in the year of reassessment, which wasn't normal. Uh, but then last year we were right around this number.
Eighty-nine is what.
Yeah.
It's a little tick, a tick higher than what we were last year.
It's, it's worked out good. We've only used one board so far, so that's nice. Uh, we do have a lot of status appeals, but that could just happen from sales and we automatically kick them off the taxes, so, um, and then the sale yesterday, we had eighty-four properties sold and we sold eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, in, in sales, had a hundred and forty-one bidders. We used our BW building. It was great. A lot of space. I had a microphone. Everyone in the back could hear me. It was nice, so hopefully we can continue using it.
It's great facility. Now, they've been pretty willing to get the community in, in involved in using the facility, taking advantage of it, so.
And I'm scheduled there for the judicial sale in December. Uh, then I'll just have to touch base with them for the following years, but I'd like to keep using it.
All they required from us was just proof of insurance, uh, which we gave them. So, yeah, Commissioner Campbell, I went down yesterday. It was a nice setup. It was very organized. It was the location.
Thank you, Sean. Any other department head report? Ken?
Uh, just an update, um, on the parking garage. Um, met with, uh, the contractors and the engineers, uh, last, this past Friday, uh, for our first progress report and, um, they are about, as of Friday, they were about seventy percent done with the painting on the top floor already. Um, they are to start demolition, uh, the concrete, uh, um, the, the, the decking that needs to be replaced. They're starting that this week.
It started last night.
The noise.
They, they submitted, they got all their paperwork drawn there and they get, um, they were submitting their, for their building permits, um, on, on last Friday, so they, uh, they should probably have those secured. I guess there was an issue with the dumpster. Uh, they had to have a, a permit from Beaver Borough to have a dumpster. That permit has been secured as well. Uh, the big thing that we're looking into and we're going to be following here real close is the, um, the codes for APA parking and access and things like that have changed. So, um, with that being said, there, I, I don't, we don't have a solution for this yet. They're working on it, looking into it, but the APA parking is right at this, the side entrance here.
On the street.
It's actually inside the parking garage.
You talk about all, all the parking.
You have to, you have to.
Inside.
Inside there. You have to have so many parking spots out, you know, so there's a percentage or whatever. Um, they're concerned with how this, the size of the parking spots now. It might push out and exceed into the traffic lane where you're exiting this way here. So they're, like I said, they don't have a solution for this yet. They're working on it. Um, you know, they were asking, they were asking me about, are we able to do away with this? And I says, well, it's, it's, it's one way. I don't know if that's a Beaver Borough thing, why it's one way, how it's turning up in the front to the right. Uh, yeah, we had this way, we want this way. So they're going to be looking into all this. Of course, I'm meeting with them every Friday from here on out, so I will keep you guys posted as the word, word back when that decision is made. Um, but obviously that's, that's a concern. And, um, Greg Gadeas, who is the vice president of Car Walker, he's going to be, he's on site of awful lot and he's going to be involved in these meetings. And he said that although the project is just getting underway, um, they're right on schedule where they expect to be and depending on weather and things of that nature, hopefully this, uh, they're able to stay on schedule.
There may be a, on the stamped plans, there may be a note on egress and egress.
Okay.
It might be a code, a stealth code.
They, I'll, I appreciate that information. I will certainly share them. They should have those stamps. They go out the garage, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head report?
Hey, Paul, follow up from yesterday. Our, we had our annual siren test required by the FEMA and the Department of Labor and Department of Mission. Our comments we get from the public every year are we didn't hear the siren. Um, reminder from PSA is that sirens are outdoor warning devices, so if they're indoors, there are other methods identified. If you're outdoors, you're supposed to hear the sirens. They go indoors to turn on TV radio to get the information, so. If you're indoors watching TV under air conditioning and other things while you're, you may not hear. We don't do, we probably, we don't do, hopefully that's about the best, okay, public on that, so that's on, on that.
Thank you. Any other department head report? None. Move to solicitors.
Twenty-five resolutions for tomorrow. I'll touch on one more thing and then I'm going to turn it over. Seventeen is our liquid fuels purchasing of roads, so eighty-nine, fifty-nine, eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents per ton. Uh, that's up a little bit from last year. Hopefully we don't use a lot of that, but, uh, that is the purpose for that. Uh, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ken, um, in regards to resolution number two. This is for the Allegheny County Hospital Development Authority.
Hi there. My name's Ken Waterger from, uh, Ken, in Pittsburgh. Um, we're here simply to get approval for, under internal revenue requirements, uh, for a bond issue that we're, uh, having issuing for the benefit of Heritage Valley Health System. Uh, they're, they're financing capital improvements with respect to both the medical center here in Beaver as well as Swickley Hospital. And, uh, I have the chief financial officer here, uh, to explain more details of the project, but the bonds are going to be issued by Allegheny County Hospital Development Authority. Uh, it'll be secured by payments from the hospital. It's tax exempt debt. The county, Allegheny County, has no obligation to pay any debt, nor will Beaver County. It's, the reason we need to be here today is that because one of the facilities that we're financing is located here in Beaver County, we need the approval of the local governmental representatives. And so, uh, it, this imposes no obligation on, on the county. Uh, it's not included as debt of the county. It has no impact on your borrowing capacity. But let Garrett, if you would, uh, just explain what the projects are.
Sure. Uh, we have several years of preferred maintenance in our facilities that we need to address through this bond issuance. Uh, things like repairing parking garages and doing some upgrades within the system itself, uh, both mechanical, uh, and infrastructure. So it runs a litany. I mean, we have a capital plan that goes over seven years that we have used as the basis for this whole bond issuance. Um, and it, you know, we're looking at about thirty-five million dollars in, in new financing to address those items. So I can go into any kind of details if you have any questions, uh, but Johnny speaking is going to be a little bit of things throughout the entire health system, hospital based.
So it's the first time you've floated the bond?
So we've had a series of bonds dating back, uh, well before my time with the health system. Uh, the most recent was in twenty nineteen. We had a series eight deep bonds. Uh, this new financing for twenty-five series proposed will refund all outstanding balances from twenty nineteen series, so we will only have these twenty, twenty-five series outstanding at that time.
That predates me. We signed off on that in twenty nineteen.
Well, in twenty nineteen, I'm not sure that it was financing any facilities here at Beaver.
Oh.
So it, it may well not.
That's why I don't.
Remember voting on some.
Yeah, well, and then, then, yeah, I, I think it goes back even further because I don't, again, twenty nineteen, I don't believe there was work down here in Beaver.
I think it was twenty twelve, two thousand and five, and then into nineteen ninety-seven. I think there was a previous issuance there. So, I mean, we've had a number of bonds, uh, for thirty, forty years, uh, as my understanding.
Was twenty nineteen a refinancing?
Partial. So it was partial refinancing in twenty twelve and then there's a little bit of new cash at that time as well.
Garrett, is there, you don't, I mean, obviously you added the resolution or no issues?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. It will be on the agenda tomorrow for voting and Ken, I'll get it over to you once.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, man.
And then twenty-three and twenty-four, um, deal with the employee healthcare here with the county and some proposed changes. And I'm going to turn it over to HR to give a little update on twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay, um, over the past several months, we've been meeting with Highmark and, um, and we had an extensive review with them, with, um, VOC, with the law department, with our financial administrator, and we have determined that it would probably be in the best interest for the county if we would switch those points, switch the health plan. We will remain self-insured, um, our financial administrator met and, and whatever, yeah, we, yeah, all the money for that. And we will say remain self-insured and we would also kind of would save a significant amount of money if we switched to this plan. Sue has some of the details of that that she's just going to share with you and then if there's any questions.
Okay, so it will be a complete switch from, um, our insurance with UPMC health plan to, um, Highmark. Um, with this, we're going to have a, a new network. The network will still consist of all of the UPMCs, the hospitals, facilities and doctors, um, all the Heritage Valley hospitals and doctors. Um, but in addition, we're going to be including access to all of the H and facilities doctors. Um, so it's going to give our employees a greater selection of doctors to use. Um, and then we'll also have addition of all of the Highmark through professional nationwide network. So we're going to have an enhanced network. Um, the plan design will remain basically the same where you're going to have the same deductibles, the same co-pays. Um, one plus though, that I think many employees will consider a plus is we're going to eliminate the requirement to earn wellness points. So all employees will automatically receive the lower deductibles. They will not need to earn wellness points to, um, to, to get that more than that. Um, with this, we're going to have a new broker. The broker would be, uh, the Rescuing Group. Um, they are, they work with many county governments throughout the state of Pennsylvania. Uh, we will become part of their county government health consortium, um, which is going to give the county access to what other health, what other counties are doing in regards to their health insurance. So we'll have more access to that information and enhanced analytical review, which we think will keep us ahead of trends so that we can respond to before, you know, when our problems. Um, and due to Rescuing's large open business, um, it should give us greater leverage when we're shopping for stock loss insurance and be able to secure that for that. Um, so those are the main pluses of it. We really think that in addition to the savings, as Tammy said, there's these one tangible pluses that we're getting. Um, and then throughout the fall, we'll move New Rescuing's with the employees to review all of these changes, make sure everybody's up to speed, all the questions are answered, um, before we have a presentation in January one.
So would you address the formulary?
Um, the formulary, um, pharmacy formulary, they're, they're constantly changing, but for the most part, it's going to be the same. One change will be in regards to coverage for GOP one medications that are used strictly for weight loss. When they're used for diabetes, there will be no change, but if, um, they're fully strictly moving them for weight loss instead of having a required B of minus thirty, it will be increased to forty. Um, the cost to continue the way we're doing it now is just, um, we can't continue doing it forever. It's just not foreseeable, feasible to do that. Um, so it would have a higher B of minus. But other than that, the formulary will be pretty much the same other than, you know, there's always some changes that are made, um, which UPMC does now as well from here.
So I think what's important for the, well, the employees to understand is that their healthcare isn't changing.
It's really.
They're still be able to have access to all the same doctors they currently use at UPMC Heritage Valley, plus now they'll have access to more.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I know Tammy, I don't know if she wants to, you know, she said there's going to be a significant savings. Can you give, just so we know? I mean, we know, but can you let everyone know what the significant savings estimate is to be?
Well, the first year, um, it would be six hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay.
Would be the savings for the first year. And then it could be projected to be more the next couple of years.
Okay. Control, I know you had, you had a hand raise there.
Yeah, you answered my question.
Okay.
You asked it before.
Wow. Any, I hope you can get a scan or score.
You know, I, I don't have anything further aside from needing an executive session for a person, no matter.
Any questions for the solicitor's office? All right, we will move to, uh, board of commissioners. Commissioner?
Uh, just one thing, where are we with, with Mark, Whitmer and the hazmat redesign? I know it got approved by Patterson. I know there was some.
Reverse point at us back there. I don't know.
Issues with the design. I, I haven't.
He sent us a, like a questionnaire last week.
Okay.
I'll send it to you.
Okay. I ran into him at the, uh, the colleague meeting. I said, hey, what's up? Where are we with the, the proposal for the extension of that? He, he was having it all in about something. I just didn't know if he'd been in contact with anybody, so.
I don't get the emails. Who else does? He's having the.
Okay, alright.
The walls are hard.
So it sounds like.
Fair, fair enough. Um, I do want to mention there's a, a reentry event tomorrow at CCBC, um, uh, from eight-thirty to two-thirty. These are good events for folks who, for whatever reason, have lost their driver's license or have been incarcerated. That helps them get back on track. There's all kinds of information. It's, it's run by, uh, Career Link, Southwest Corner Workforce Development Board, CCBC, Job Train for Beaver County and South, uh, folks trying to get back on track with their life and continue to, um, add value to, uh, society by, by getting a job and, uh, restoring some of the stuff that they've lost through their incarceration. Uh, it's a, it's a nice event and, um, they do get a job there. It's at the room under the library, nine one oh three, CCBC, if you know anybody that's interested. And also, uh, Air Heritage, uh, has a big event, uh, this Saturday, uh, from ten to five. Uh, a good friend, Tom, we're together on, and CCBC Aviation, it's, uh, drive-in, fly-in, fly-in or drive-in. Um, I don't know how many of us are going to fly in, um, but I'll drive over in my car, but, uh, the radio station I know is going to be there. Uh, I'm all day. There's music, food, uh, obviously cars and planes and great event for, for kids. They do a nice job, uh, there. So, um, that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, any audience participation? Please state your names.
About yellow Derrich, do you need my address?
Just municipal, it's fine.
Harmony Township.
Thank you.
Um, in regard to the siren, since it was brought up, I didn't hear the siren. I got the voice message, you know, me and across ten other people in this county that still have a landline, um, so it was on my landline, but I did not hear the siren. So, you know. Number two.
So Harmony Township has not.
Outside, outside the radius.
So that's why I didn't hear it. Okay. I did get the voice message, so, thank you. I don't know if there was a decision made on ICE. I know that was a big thing. Okay. Which is fine. I just kind of want to just share my thoughts for whatever there were. I do have mixed feelings on it. Um, as you guys know, I'm first generation. My parents are immigrants. I have relatives who do live in Venezuela, even though I know I'm Italian, but I have them both. Um, so I understand the rationale of people coming here, especially in those countries. Again, Venezuela is not pretty, um, but my hesons are still there. I know about the raid, raid implication. Ambridge, as you know, Ambridge is below me, so it's been a big to-do. It's a big to-do in yesterday's Cambridge council meeting. I guess my concern is, are we really getting the criminals? Like, I mean, I know the argument will be, well, they're already criminals because they came here illegally. I get that. But I'm going to say, if I was living in one of these foreign countries and the situation is bad and I had an opportunity to come here, I think I would have taken that chance. And, you know, everyone has to kind of decide for themselves. So my question is, you know, supposedly there are two fronts, supposedly in Ambridge cartel related. I don't know if that's true or not. So my question is, if it is true, those businesses are still there. Are we actually getting the criminals? Are we just getting these people who just wanted a better situation from themselves? And I understand also when these people are coming, their phones or passports or whatever also probably taken away from them. They have no idea what's really going on and plus, of course, the language barrier. Um, I don't envy you guys for the decision you have to make with the FBI and the sheriff department, um, and all of that. Um, not that I'm really, really being helpful, but my point is if ICE, we're going to team up with ICE, then I really want us to then be getting the true criminals. Again, I know the argument is all the criminals came here illegally, but they're not really doing anything. Let's not invest so much time in getting these people when we should be actually getting the real criminals that are bringing in the drugs, causing problems within society. That's fine. And my second final thing, um, I want to talk about our favorite T-word and it's not Trump, um, it's taxes. Um, and I'm glad that Maria and Sandy are here because I have discussed with them about taxes in the past. The tax situation, how we tax within municipalities and within counties, I don't feel is fair. And I will be upfront that I'm already having a situation with Harmony Township that Garrett is free to talk to you guys about it afterwards if he wishes. Um, I don't feel, and I, I guess, let me back up. I don't know, does a county require that the municipalities make sure that the accessory buildings on one's property is taxed?
You're the right person in the room.
Josh.
Josh is our director of assessment, but short version and Josh can give a more detail. It's, it's, they're required to send in building permits and that's how we would be notified that there is an accessory building on the property.
See, in my argument is that a homeowner who pays taxes should be able to build whatever he or she wants on that property. He or she is already paying taxes on that land on their home as well. No one is living in a shed. No one is living in chicken coops, because that's my issue here. Um, so again, the fairness of it is, where is the fairness? Because someone who's doing remodeling inside their home, let's say they have an unfinished basement, they want to finish it. No one is aware of that, right? So there's no tax increase on them. And not that I want there to be tax increase on them and neither of my advocates that we go into people's homes. So that's not what I'm advocating at all. But again, these homes are being beautified inside and we are unaware. So people like myself who are fixing up the outside or adding a structure, now we're being taxed for what? So again, there is no fairness and, and also I'm glad that the control and pressure are here because I did speak to them about the unfairness a while back, even before my whole issue. So as a county, what can we do? And please don't tell me to talk to my state representative, um, because that's very big.
You just saw my talk and your state representative.
You know how I feel about the general assembly, that's what I'm saying. Um, so they are, I'm sorry. We have a, you know, split general assembly. Nothing's going to get done. So what at a county level can we do? How can we look at it to be fair? Because, and I ain't going to talk to my tax collector. It has to be fair for everyone.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, it really is a Josh question. We, we follow the same old codes. I mean, there, there is a thing about temporary structures versus permanent structures and different things on how things are taxed, but Josh, why don't you give us a quick primer here on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not really sure of, of the question, but the, I mean, if it's attached to real estate, we're going to value it.
Yeah, I, I think if I can intercheck, so I sort of know a little bit what's going on. I think you're, I think your complaint, claim five is that you don't feel accessory structures should be taxed.
Correct.
I think that's what, what the issue is and, and the law says that they're supposed to be.
And my understanding is if someone's updating inside, it is, they are supposed to be reporting that. It's just nobody sees it, so you can't make it do it. They're supposed to be reporting. So technically, right, Josh, if they're changing patterns or major things or major rooms, they should be reporting that to the municipality and such, then reporting it to us.
Yeah, so at the county level, what we do is if there's a permit for, let's say, now some municipalities don't do permits.
Right. And there are some states that don't even allow it either.
Right. So if there's a permit for, say, a driveway, we're not going to assess a driveway, but if we get that permit, we go out and our field guys will look and if it's not more private and there's no gates, we're going to look through windows, we're going to look at the basements, we're going to make sure that our card's correct. But yeah, interiorly, we don't go in, so it is kind of difficult to do that. Uh, but if we see that we have an unfinished basement and it's not finished, our field assess will mark that and then we'll provide, but they, I mean, the argument of ancillary structures, I mean, that's, that's always been an argument. Um, I think you have a, a valid point with chicken coops. I mean, there's no attachment to real estate by way of, uh, utility or foundation, but a garage, a garage is attached to the real estate by foundation. Uh, there can be an argument for sheds that there's no attachment to real estate because you can move them. Uniformly, we value all of it because if I'm looking at a house with a shed and without a shed, I'm probably getting the one with the shed. It's the exact same. Um, but you can make the argument that it's not attached. Uh, but it could be attached by way of electricity or, or water, gas, you know, anything like that, and it still can be moved. Um, but yeah, we do it uniformly. There's not always value, uh, but most of the times we have it described. So some sheds don't gain value, uh, when you show that there's a.
Structure.
Ten by ten Fisher Price shed out there, but those, they're not going to increase the value for taxing purposes.
So I, to be fair, I had, during the reassessment, I had the exact same questions you had because I didn't think it was fair for someone who built a house twenty years ago to someone who built a house today. And they, the way they grade houses, I'm just going to make this up, A through C. So you could build a house for, I could build the same house for six hundred thousand dollars, I could build it for three hundred thousand dollars, depending on what you put in there, right? But your next door neighbor built their house twenty years ago and completely remodeled it and put a hundred thousand dollar kitchen in, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars worth of flooring in, well, technically their house is going to be valued more when they go to resell it, but.
Right.
You don't get the inside because you're, you're doing the outside, you know? So there's a lot of questions on fairness on, you know, the value, the, uh, praise value versus the assessed value.
Market value.
Market value. And it, it's a tough situation, but you don't like the answer we're going to give you, but we just follow what the, what the county code says and.
Right. But again, as a county, you can re, not require those permits. I mean, that is.
Those, those are done at the local level. That, that's, that's a local.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
Yeah.
So then the municipality, then, I just want to be clear that I'm understanding. So the municipality then should not feel the need to require building permits for accessory buildings, because they're not feeling pressure from you guys. It, this has to be done.
It's, that's, that's okay.
There's no.
There's no county.
Their own taxing incentive that they would do that, yes.
And whether or not our assessment office puts a value on.
And whether or not our assessment office puts a value on a chicken coop or a shed, you know, it might show that it's on that property, but there might not be a value attached to it.
And I think it's important, too, Lake Ohio is one municipality that doesn't do permits, uh, but a place like Beaver, or any type of town like that, you need to make sure you're putting the structure on your property, so if you're putting a garage on, they're gonna require you to get a permit and get a survey, because that is where the structure is going, because when you go to sell your house, and you put this garage on, and now it's on, uh.
Your neighbor's property.
Your neighbor's property.
Love the badge disputes that we.
And it's quite apparent you need a permit for dumpsters out in Beaver.
And we have that happen, we had a neighbor who built a garage, and it's, they can't be seen, they built it on our property, when they went to sell it, we had to give them an A, so they can sell their property.
'Cause it was on yours.
It was on ours. Did they tear it down, or we had?
I had a similar issue.
We had to rezone to their property. 'Cause in the country, it don't use anything.
So then I guess my final question then is, in regards to the fairness of power taxing, including outside just municipality, just, you know, all together, then how do we resolve that matter? Again, having someone who has these outside structures, or has done work on the outside, but someone who's done inside, again, okay, now we go inside by the way, Josh, um, but you know what I'm saying, like, we have to come up with some kind of solution that's fair all around, and I'm not sure if, you know, if it's by the number of bedrooms, I don't know, acreage, or whatever, but something has to kind of be fair all around.
So Gabriela, if you want, you say, when you go back to if, and you showed me how many times I know going along, if, if someone owns a property, they're paying tax already, they should be able to whatever they want with it, so we can't really say that, because our taxes are based on assessed value, which, there's value, so anytime you add something, there's value, if you wanna say, I own the property, and whatever I put on is mine, then we have to go to flat tax, and I have to do it based on acreage or something else.
Yeah.
And everyone pays the same, but then, when you go to submarket, it's always gonna be different, so we have to come to an agreement on what's the best way to tax, so that we can pay for things that we want, like, shares, cops, like, we have to collect the money to pay that, right now, there's property tax, we can argue all day long what's the best way to do that, but if our way is assessment and a, and a value, then anything we put on that property changes the value, it has to change our taxes, 'cause that is the method we use right now.
And that's set by the state.
So we'd have to change the mode of that, the formula, which gets us a whole new thing, and, you know, that there are all these people that do it, and there are those false property taxes, I've heard nobody come up with a good solution to fix it, everybody wants to increase sales taxes like that, that just creates a bigger problem, because everything goes through hair spray.
And if it's exacerbated by the school districts and the school taxes, who do appeal things so that they can make sure that they're getting the revenue for those schools, um, I don't think we can solve that today, that's for sure.
Yeah, I understand that, but there's something, though, at a county level that can be changed, that can help, and within our county, that would be great, and I think you guys do have some kind of powers to do something of that change, if we have preliminary state representatives come up with something.
Yeah, not really, but the county doesn't do anything as far as local zoning or local permits, those are all the local level, um, that, that doesn't come to the county at all.
Right, but we're talking about the assessment, et cetera, whatever, and, you know, whether that be a flat tax or whatever, and, sorry, I don't wanna go along either, I know it's a long thing, I do feel that as American citizens or property owners, period, you own the property, you should be able to build whatever you want on your property within reason, and not go by your proper neighbor's, immediate neighbor's property line. There, you, you should not be, um, told that you can't, and in regards to the permits, I feel like it's extortion, I mean, what's the difference between the cartel and the mafia, you know, only, you're not gonna think you're shanked on every month, unless you plan to do a building every month, but basically, you're gone, please, can I build on my property? Here, here's five hundred dollars, I can build whatever I wanna build, I mean, truthfully, it is extortion, you're a taxpayer, you're paying, you shouldn't have to also pay to, uh, whatever, make your house nice or make it comfortable, that's it, sorry, thank you.
No problem, and, and just, to go back to your second one, the two-eight-seven-G agreement, I don't know how familiar you are with the process it's in right now, I know we explained it in previous meetings, um, so it was brought to our attention, we didn't know the sheriff was, uh, applying to be a two-eight, to be part of the two-eight-seven-G, uh, we reached out to him, we met with him, at this time, you know, he did fill his application out and put it through to the, who would it be, through Homeland Security?
Yeah.
Homeland, Homeland Security, he has not heard back from, so they're still in the process of accepting applications to be part of this program, um, we did confirm with our insurance that unless the commissioners sign the agreement, he could sign it, but unless the commissioner signed the agreement, those individuals who are working underneath the two-eight-seven-G agreement won't be covered under our insurance, so it will be a thing that the commissioners either have to sign or not, but at this time, there has been no confirmation from Homeland Security that they were approved to be part of that program. Uh, the sheriff's side of it is that they will not be doing raids, they will not be doing anything along those lines, they want to be able to have access to the database, so that if there's a worn-out front individual in Beaver County, that they have access to see if that person is an illegal immigrant or, uh, a legal immigrant, and at this time, if they pull somebody that's in our jail, or they're arresting someone, they don't have access to that, 'cause there's only one agency, two agencies that can, uh, say, yes, this person is an illegal immigrant or not, which is Homeland Security or ICE, uh, so this program or agreement extends their reach whenever it comes to find out who's a legal immigrant, so, um, at this time, it's, I don't wanna say it's a standstill, but we're waiting to hear back from the sheriff's office on whether or not they were approved from Homeland Security.
And he indicated he didn't have a timeline of how long it would take for them to review his application.
Okay, um, I just wanted to add, one of the concerns from the citizens in Ambridge were, what happened to those people that are taken away, um, since no one knows what happened.
It would be ridiculous, yeah, that, I don't know, and that would be the same as if they were a part of it, they wouldn't, if they were to arrest someone, that those individuals would still be handled and, um, detained by ICE, not by the sheriffs, so. Any other audience participation? Reason to reconvene from executive session?
No.
I think we have to hold it here.
Okay, move into executive session.